Yes.
Good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, good morning.
Yesterday I was yawned at the butt in the afternoon. I was telling them, it's too early for you to be yawning. And I'm like, I've been yawning since about nine this morning. It's way too early. I was thinking that was the problem, but I've been yawning since about nine o'clock this morning again.
I haven't caught up since Labor Day was gone. That weekend was too tight.
Morning, love. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Oh, shoots. For now, I just, um...
Well, you know, it was a ride.
Get out of the way. I live a lot. It was good, though. I'm getting hairdos or something this afternoon. Get some fresh hair.
Me, or something.
Oh. Yeah.
I'm glad you're all right. Mommy's all happy.
You're okay. Have a good time.
Yes, you would.
It's an honor.
There.
I'd want to go sit there and use my brush.
We just take...
Yes.
That's all you need.
That's all you need.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good day.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yep.
Howdy.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
My wife loves these guys. You know, she gets her hands, tries to give them a hug, and she goes to sleep. It's crazy. You're welcome. How are you?
Hi. Good. How are you?
Hi.
Long time no see.
Yeah. You can wear a coat.
Hey. Thanks. Hey.
Morning.
Morning.
Yep.
Howdy.
Hi. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah. My wife loves these guys. You know, she gets her hands, tries to give them a hug, and she goes to sleep. It's crazy. You're welcome. How are you?
Hi. Good. How are you? Hi. Long time no see. Do you want to show off, too? Oh, thank you.
Yeah. You can't go wrong with these, right?
I know where your next job is going to be.
What's that?
I said, I know where your next job is going to be.
Oh.
How are you?
One more. Yeah, you got that straight. I was having my application there. You guys give me good words, I get hired.
I do remember.
Normal. Oh, gee. My dear.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah. I know. Hey, after share these, you crap on my...
Wherever you want, my mother.
Yeah.
For your daddy and Suzie.
Yeah.
I have the paper that opened last year. Oh, yeah. I've been accidentally pulled up on the other one. Not even seen a second.
Good. How are you? You've been in the office. You've been in the office.
Night party? Yeah.
Yes.
How are you?
How are you?
We told her we were golfing.
Good thing.
That's what he used to say.
Here you go. Here you go.
But now...
He was.
And...
Now, we said we were...
Look, like you're eating a matcha strawberry.
Well, I don't think you were.
Just like that. You were over there.
They were... Yeah. No. Yeah. They had a big chair. They talked about three washers.
Should we give them a try?
Three twenty-four. It was weird. Traffic. Fifteen ninety-nine. And some still had concerns about...
We need a whole world...
Yeah. This is interesting because a lot of information and a lot that we are...
We're not making a product.
Well, that's good. I'll share that. I think there's a...
It's invisible.
Does he say that the official meet...
I can't handle stuff. I'm just... I told you, you know... It's fine.
It's a liquid band-aid.
Yeah. Because it's something that's normal when I was spending...
Well, when they... Whenever they read that, it's like...
Good morning. Before we start this morning, we normally do our prayer and pledge of allegiance. But this morning, we want to do something a little different. This has been heavy on my mind and heart. I asked our Veterans Administration to be here. This is Morning Mike McMunn. Thank you for being here. We had thirteen service members that went down recently in Afghanistan. As they returned to the United States, the Speaker of the House refused to have their names read on the floor of the House. These men and women served our country. They enlisted in our country to protect us. It is absolute disgrace that members of our federal government would not allow their names to be read on the House floor. So this morning, I ask you to please stand. I'm going to read their names. Because of Lycoming County, we will always honor and respect our men in service, women of the young, military, and our veterans. So this morning, I ask you to bow your head as we stand as I read your names. Please have a moment of silence for them, and then I'll follow with our prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Lance Corporal David Lee Espinosa, 20, of Rio Bravo, Texas. Sergeant Nicole G., 23, of Roseville, California. Staff Sergeant Taylor Hoover, of Salt Lake City, Utah, 31. Staff Sergeant Ryan Canals, 23, of Knoxville, Tennessee. Lance Corporal Riley McComb, 20, from Boehrderen, Wyoming. Corporal Hunter Lopez, 22, of Indio, California. Lance Corporal Dylan R. Moorelaw, from Macho Kumumunga, California, age 20. Lance Corporal Kareem McCooly, age 20, of Norco, California. Sergeant Johani Rosario Bichardo, 25, of Lawrence, Massachusetts. Corporal Humberto Sanchez, 22, of Logan's Wort, Indiana. Corporal Dagan William Tyler Page, 23, of Omaha, Nebraska. Lance Corporal Jared Schmitz, age 20. And Seaman Max Sowiak, of Ohio. May God have mercy on your souls, and please protect and comfort their families. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you this day for our many blessings. One of those blessings are grandparents. We remember grandparents this morning as we recognized them this past Sunday on their special day. We thank you for the ways they have paid for us and our children, the love and wisdom they share each day, provide them good health so they can enjoy their children and grandchildren in their twilight years. We remember this Friday, POW MIA Day. We pray that there are more than twenty... Excuse me. Eighty-one thousand Americans still missing from wars dating back to World War II. We pray for the families of those missing. Let us never forget those that fought and continue our efforts to bring them home. This Saturday, we'll celebrate the 74th birthday of the Air Force. We thank you for those that serve to protect our skies. Bless and protect these men and women and all that serve our country. Lord, we pray this day for our children. They face many challenges in today's world. We pray for those that have been stricken with diseases and illnesses. We ask you to heal them, comfort their families in these times. We know that you are the great physician, and all healing originates in you. We have witnessed many miracles and have seen you heal many. We hold these children in our hearts in prayers. Now, Lord, we ask you to guide us in this meeting this morning. May it be one of unity that brings glory to you. These things we humbly pray. In Jesus' name, amen. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This time, we convene the Commissioners' public meeting and ask for approval of minutes of previous meeting.
I'll move to approve. A second.
Okay. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, Harry, public comment on agenda items only at this time. Do we have any on the computer?
None on line.
Okay. Any from the audience? Okay. You're in, then. Move on.
We'll move on to six... 1.6. Today, we are presenting a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Okay. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday, and whereas 46 children per year or 16,790 children per year are diagnosed with cancer in the United States, and whereas there are approximately 40,000 children on active treatment at any given time, and whereas the average age of diagnosis is six years old compared to 66 years for adult cancer diagnosis, and whereas 80% of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late with Mutt's Stative Disease, and whereas on average, there's been .0... .6% increase in incidence per year since the mid-1970s, resulting in an overall incident increase of 24% over the past four years, whereas 2/3 of childhood cancer patients will have had chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment, toxicity, with 1/4 being classified as severe to light threatening, and whereas approximately 1/2 of childhood cancer families rate the associated financial toxicity due to out-of-pocket expenses are considerable to severe, and whereas in the last 20 years, only four new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer, and whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated needs for increased funding to carry this out, whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the American Childhood Cancer Organization, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support, and whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicating their expertise to treat and cure childhood cancer, and whereas too many are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lycoming County, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Lycoming County. We encourage all Americans to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause that has so deeply impacted families in every community across our country. Signed by Lycoming County Commissioner Scott Metzger, Chairman Tony Missair, Vice Chairman, and Rick Maravito, Secretary.
Thank you. Krista?
Thank you, Commissioners. We, being Team Tink, have partnered with the American Childhood Cancer Organization this year for a fundraiser. That's the flyer that I handed out to all of you and the stickers that Harry handed out to you at the beginning of the meeting. Because of the efforts that they have in the research and the education, they were very helpful to us on the journey that we had. There are three childhood cancer survivors in this room today, and when you think about the fact of the number of people that are in the room and the fact that a lot of people can't come to these meetings, it's kind of overwhelming to think about the fact that there's already three of them that have survived this disease. The fact that the medicines that are available to these kids are 40 to 60 years old, there aren't new ones. Now, Olivia was lucky enough to be accepted into a trial and did receive the trial drug. However, there aren't a lot of new ones, and when there are new ones, it takes years and years to get them approved by the FDA. It was a punch in the gut when I was talking to one of her oncologists and realized the trial drug that she received, if my older children had gotten the same type of cancer that she had, their survival rates were under 10% when they were her age, if they had gotten her cancer, in their lifetime. Just in that number of years, this trial drug increased her survival rate 67%. This isn't right in the 20th and the 21st century that our children aren't worth more than 4% of the research dollars of cancer. And I realize that our adults are important. I realize that every cancer needs to be researched, but our children are our future. They need to have the research dollars spent on the cancers that are affecting our children's lives. Just Sunday, we celebrated Bronwyn's end of treatment. It's very exciting to see someone that can come through and survive. But I hope that you all take a minute, look at the flyers, contribute where you can, help these families, these children fight through, and hopefully come out the other side. I assume a lot of you are aware of Nick Kapron. He paints himself green. He just did a fundraiser down at Sam's Club on Saturday for another family whose son is fighting. I believe it's brain cancer, if I remember correctly. I don't know if you can correct me on that. But he's always connected with a family somewhere here, locally or in the United States, that childhood cancer family. Case for Cancer is another local organization that helps families financially when they're fighting cancer. Think Big is out of Lewisburg and helps families financially. Paternostro Cancer Foundation, another local organization. Friends of Jacqueline, Bronwyn, Livy, has helped these two girls connect with teams at Susquehanna University. Liv has connected with the women's softball team, and Bronwyn has connected with the women's volleyball team, and they both have big sister families through these teams that have been with them on their journey through cancer and staying with them after their journey, encouraging them and connecting them with life during cancer, life after cancer. And then again, the American Childhood Cancer Association. There's a QR code on there. Their website's on there. Lastly, I'd just like to read two things. I hope you never have to hear the words, "Your child has cancer." I hope you never have to hear, "The prognosis is not good." I hope you never have to prepare to undergo radiation or chemotherapy, have a port surgically inserted into their chest, be connected to IV poles, look at you with fear in their eyes and say, "Don't worry, mommy. Everything will be okay." I hope you never have to hold your child as they visit vomit green bile. I hope you never have to feed them ice chips for lunch. I hope you never have to watch the cure you pray slowly take away their identity as they lose their hair, become skeletal, swell up from steroids, become barely or unable to walk or move, and look at you with hope in their eyes and say, "It's going to be okay, mommy." I hope you never have to stay in the hospital for weeks, months, or years at a time where there is no privacy, sleeping on a slab with your face to the wall, where you cry in muffled silence. I hope you never have to see a mother alone, huddled in a dark hospital corridor, crying quietly after just being told, "There is nothing more we can do." I hope you never have to use every bit of energy you have left with all of this going on around you to remain positive, and the feelings of guilt, sorrow, hope, and fear overwhelm you. I hope you never have to see a child's head bolted to a table as they receive radiation. I hope you never have to take your child home, grateful but so afraid, in a wheelchair because the chemo and radiation has damaged their muscles, 35 pounds lighter, pale, bald, and scarred, and they look at you with faith in their eyes and say, "It's going to be okay, mommy." I hope you never have to watch a family wandering aimlessly minutes after their child's body has been removed. I hope you never have to face the few friends that have stuck behind... beside you and hear them say, "Thank God, that's over with," because you never... No, it never will be. Your life becomes a whirl of doctors, blood tests, MRIs, and you try to get your life back to normal while living in mind-numbing fear that any one of these tests could result in hearing the dreaded words, "The cancer has returned," or "The tumor is growing," and your friends become even fewer. I hope you never have to experience any of these things because only then will you understand what cancer cannot do. It cannot cripple love. It cannot shatter hope. It cannot corrode faith. It cannot destroy peace. It cannot kill friendship. It cannot suppress memories. It cannot silence courage. It cannot invade the soul. It cannot steal eternal life, and it cannot conquer the spirit. The last thing I'll share is two very special people are here, and you mentioned about Grandparents' Day. We became grandparents about a year before Olivia was diagnosed. He became part of our home three months after he was born. So when Olivia was diagnosed, we had a almost one-year-old to take care of. So the little one that's there, the little mama sitting beside him, became Aiden's second mama because we couldn't take him to the hospital and care for Olivia, and we needed someone that we could drop at her doorstep and say, "We gotta go. We're in the hospital. We don't know when we're going to be home." And Holly Bennett-Sanner stepped up and took care of him as if he was her own, and her husband Shane, and we could... Would have been lost. And Sue Bowman and her daughter Jenny were at the hospital almost as much as we were, supporting Olivia and Harry and me along the path that we started down, and we'd have been lost without them. So friends, it doesn't shatter that, and it does bring hope, and we'd have been lost without people like that. So there is hope, and it is a scary road, and I need to share the fear because people need to know, but I also need to share the hope. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Christian and Harry and Olivia, I think it's so great that you came and spoke to us today. One of the battles to overcome is having people talk about it and have them be able to understand that although there's fear, there's also, as you said, hope. If you get us a letter from this organization talking about the details on the four... Only 4% of the money going...
Yeah.
I'm sure that the Commissioners would sign it, and we would send it to Fred Keller and to Senator Casey, and to start to kickstart some, you know, conversation at the national level about that, to the extent that we can.
Absolutely.
And to all of you, again, thank you. We know how difficult it must be, and I really appreciate you talking to us about it because it helps us understand.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have the proclamation. We'd like everybody to come up and present it and get a picture. If you'd like to.
Keener, Maya.
Can Aiden come up, too?
We didn't bring Aiden. Logan and Holly have to come, though.
Oh, okay. How old is Aiden now?
Aiden is five and in kindergarten.
Oh, my God.
Yes. True story. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Liv, you have to hold the proclamation, even though I made you both. I love you.
You're in Bronwyn here.
Yeah. You two standing in the middle there.
Yeah. I'll go with your one and drink.
Yeah.
Come on. You're part of this family. At least, that's what I heard.
I'll send you. Wait. This is a... I'm turning security.
That's my sticker. One. Oh, you're good. There you go. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't follow them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
What's up?
Thanks.
This is Eric Keener, father of Bronwyn Keener, new Warrior Princess survivor, finished treatment. And then, you know Maya, leukemia survivor. And that's Sue Bowman in the red shirt. Yes. And then Holly Bennett-Sanner and Logan is in this room.
Yeah.
I will. I'll reach out to my contact there and get that hopefully at this point.
Are you concerned?
Yes. And if it's okay with you, I'll just send these out to the department, so every department has them.
Absolutely.
Can I send Holly?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. We'll move on to 2.0. Randy Clemmons for the Accounts Payable Cash Requirements Report.
Morning, Brandy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to present the cash requirements report for invoices due through September 22nd to be paid on September 15th in the amount of $455,207.84. Pretty small one this week.
That certainly is a small one. Yeah. Is Jerry Kennedy on the phone?
I am, sir.
Thank you, Jerry. On page three, go over the cybersecurity expense there for the $9,000.
It is a $9,000 expense to the Silent Cybersecurity Group. Using our relationship with CCAP, we have gone together with a group of counties to contract in a cooperative agreement with Silent to provide various consulting, cybersecurity scans, penetration tests, tabletop exercises for a much reduced price. If we were to go out and do this on our own individually, we would probably be in the neighborhood of $60,000 to $80,000 as an annual cost going through the CCAP group. We're able to reduce that down to about $9,000.
Annually, correct?
Annually, yes.
Okay. That was my only question. I appreciate you hanging in there to explain that to us.
No problem.
Any questions, Commissioner? Okay. Harry, you might could have a motion accepted, Count Spabel.
I'll move to approve.
A second. Okay. Say aye. Aye. So, Harry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy.
Personnel actions with Roxanne Greco.
Good morning, Commissioners. At the prison, we have Kevin S. Steyer. This is an administrative change to his start date. He is a full-time correctional officer relief, pay grade CO1 at $17.46 an hour, and the new date is effective September 14th, 2021. In the courts, with Judge Lindhart, Joseph C. Ruby, full-time replacement law clerk two, pay grade 11, $54,178.73 annually, effective October 3rd, 2021. At pre-release, Ricky Sue Burkheiser, full-time replacement, female resident supervisor cook, pay grade five, $15.602783 an hour, effective September 19th, 2021. And finally, at pre-release, Paige Emrick as a full-time replacement.
All right, we'll move on to 2.0, Randy Clemmons, for the accounts payable cash requirements report.
Good morning, Randy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to present the cash requirements report for invoices due through September 22nd to be paid on September 15th in the amount of $455,207.84. Pretty small one this week.
Is Jerry Kennedy on the phone?
I am, sir.
Thank you, Jerry. On page three, go over the cybersecurity expense there for the $9,000.
It is a $9,000 expense to the Silent Cybersecurity Group. Using our relationship with CCAP, we have gone together with a group of counties to contract in a cooperative agreement with Silent to provide various consulting, cybersecurity scans, penetration tests, tabletop exercises for a much reduced price. If we were to go out and do this on our own, individually, we would probably be in the neighborhood of $60,000 to $80,000 as an annual cost going through the CCAP group. We're able to reduce that down to about $9,000.
Annually, correct?
Annually, yes.
Okay. That was my only question. I appreciate you hanging in there to explain that to us.
No problem.
Any questions? Here you might have a motion accepted, Count Spable.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Off their side, aye. Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Personnel actions with Roxanne Greco.
Good morning, Commissioners. At the prison, we have Kevin S. Steyer. This is an administrative change to his start date. He's a full-time correctional officer relief, pay grade CO1 at $17.46 an hour, and the new date is effective September 14th, 2021. In the courts with Judge Lindhart, Joseph C. Ruby, full-time replacement law clerk two, pay grade 11, $54,178.73 annually, effective October 3rd, 2021. At pre-release, Ricky Sue Burkheiser, full-time replacement, female resident supervisor cook, pay grade five, $15.602783 an hour, effective September 19th, 2021. And finally, at pre-release, Paige Emrick, as a full-time replacement, female resident supervisor, pay grade five, $15.37 an hour, effective September 20th, 2021.
Okay, so all replacement positions and the replacement position for the course and the other ones being associated with the prison. Any questions on this? Motion accept.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Off their side, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maya Toon has an informational item.
Morning, Commissioners. This is just to acknowledge that when we got the bids back previously for food products because of the market and the crisis that's occurring as a result of COVID, we, there's a shortage, no one will basically confirm to fix pricing now. So we're working on figuring out moving forward how to do that, but legally what we have to do is go out to bid for those items where one vendor did not bid on. So this is just a rebid for those items that remain open. And then if we happen to not get anything back again, then obviously we can purchase as needed, but moving forward, I discussed with Matt, you know, our option may be that we have to go weekly. It's, you know, extra work, but unfortunately, that's kind of where we're at in the game of food right now. So it's a matter of not only finding it, some of these food vendors, but also then once they finding it, what price we will have to pay for it. So no one can hold pricing firm, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that and there may be a new process moving forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioners, you know, what's challenging is the times have changed. We're in a very unique environment when it comes to the pricing of different supplies, yet procurement and the laws associated and the regulations that we follow haven't caught up or even been attempted to be caught up at a state-level level.
Thank you.
So moving on to action items, Maya actually has 5.1 through 5.4.
And first item I have for you is to vote to approve Resolution 2021-10. It's for the donation of surplus property to Moxieboro Police Department. There is some extra police lights that are not being utilized and no longer really useful to the Sheriff's Department and Moxieboro needs those for their operations, so we're going to donate those lights to them for their use.
Fantastic. Motion accept the resolution.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
Off their side, aye. Aye, so carry.
The next item I have for you is to vote on a contract with Center County Correctional Facility for inmate housing. This is just a renewal to our current contract. There is no rate increase at $65 per day per inmate on an as-needed basis. And we have utilized them in the past, specifically in 2020, so.
Do we know how many are up there as of today? Do we know how many inmates are up there as of today in Center County?
Give me two seconds.
And I guess why he's doing that, last year, we actually spent $23,000 and $10 of that facility for housing, so it's more of a heavily-used facility.
Questions or comments?
Commissioner, Center County, four, Clinton, four. Those were females and then four males are in Clinton.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Off their side, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The last item I have for you is to acknowledge the list of contracts that were approved by the Director of Administration for the month of August, and there were seven, and they're as listed.
These are the under 10th of the.
That is correct, and all of them actually are budgeted items and more so they're just renewals.
Any questions on any of those contracts? Motion accept. Off their side, aye. Aye, so carry.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
5.5, Jason Yorks, for voting on amendment to adjust labor rates to the professional services agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Jason.
Commissioners, four-year approval is an amendment to the 2016 contract that we have with Bestline Equipment. It's just a simple adjustment for labor rates. There was increases, now mind you, the price has not changed since 2016, so we did get five years at fixed rates, so the shop prices did go up as well as the field repair rate and everything. So this is a contract we use on an as-needed basis for these machinery that we have that are serviced through Bestline.
Any questions or comments?
So these are, the equipment comes from Bestline or our equipment?
Typically, sir, it's things that we've purchased through Bestline.
Oh, we've purchased through Bestline, okay, thank you.
They're usually the rep or the repair shop for the items.
Right, okay.
I'll second that.
Off their side, aye. Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
The last four, 5.6 through 5.9, Jenny Pachiano is presenting, and Jenny, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
How are you, Jenny?
Good morning. All right, the first item, 5.6, is the Step 2021 Fair Subversive Agreement for the Urgent Need Program for $25,000, and that's a budgeted item, and that is associated with the contract from a few weeks ago with our Fair 2021 contract.
Yeah, we can do that if you want.
Oh, okay, sure. And then the second one is the Step 2021 Fair Subversive Agreement for Supportive Housing Program, and that's for $265,000, and that is to pay rent and for supportive housing services, wraparound services associated with that. The third contract or subversive agreement is the Step 2021 Fair Subversive Agreement for the Homes in Need Program in the amount of $225,000, and that is for a home repair, the home repair program. And then finally, the last one is the Greater Lycra Habitat for Humanity, 2021 Fair Subversive Agreement in the amount of $63,000, and that is for the Scott Street Memorial Home, Simple Family Home, that Habitat building.
Okay, any questions on any of the agreements?
Yeah, the Homes in Need Program, 5.8, those are usually homes where seniors or people like that live that are, fall within a certain household income. And I remember, oh man, probably 30 years ago, this program, or maybe 20, has the funding gone down in this particular program versus the others? Because I know how beneficial it was to many of the seniors that they could have, and there was a dollar amount that they could apply for.
Sure, typically, we cap the per household, the per project limit at $25,000 per house, and it's because above $25,000 per house, the prevailing wage requirements come into play and it requires additional specifications for the house. So we limit or settle limit the award for $25,000 per house. This year, the award in 2021 was $225,000 for the Homes in Need Program. The year before, it was $250,000, and the year before that, it was $300,000. So it has fluctuated in the past. I think last year, it was a little bit lower because more money was awarded to the supportive housing program, given the need for those kinds of services.
I would just like to remind everyone that we have to be very careful of squeezing this program out. I know a lot of the elderly were the ones that took advantage of this program, and if you're saying it went from $300,000 to $225 in three years, that's a substantial amount of money. Go ahead.
And part of that is because the year it had $300,000, the county actually got 1.15 in Marcella Shale Fair Funding, so we actually had funds to begin with, whereas last year we only got, the county only received $948,000. So our total amount of fair funding went down as well, so it kind of tracked that way as well.
Okay, thanks, Jenny.
Jenny, how many are on the waiting list for some of these?
It fluctuates, but it's typically around 400 or 500 people throughout the county for the Homes in Need Program.
Yeah. But what that does is it helps our seniors who are very low-income be able to stay in their home so that if the home needs a roof or whatever, they can actually stay there, which ultimately saves the taxpayers' money because they may be at a Medicaid-supported facility or otherwise. I mean, it's not guaranteed that that would happen, but it certainly probably keeps their spirit up too, being in their own home.
Okay, any other comments? Motion to accept action item 5.5 through 5.8.
5.6.
5.6.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that. Well, did you mean 5.6 through 5.9?
No, 5.5 through 5.8.
5.5 is Jason Yorks.
5.6 through 5.9.
He doesn't have it updated. Yes, 5.6.
They have it updated, okay.
I'll move to approve 5.6 through 5.9.
Thank you.
Well, then I'll take away mine, no, I'll second.
I'll second his one.
Off their side, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I didn't do one, sorry. It's up on the desk, I guess, if you have to do one.
It's all good.
Commissioner, comment?
I'll make a couple comments.
Commissioner, can I just provide one update that was in on it, Jen?
Yes.
I just want to let everybody know that the authorities and boards is accessible on likego.org on the front page, very top button on the left-hand side, and it's really easy to navigate. If you click on it, you'll see all the boards and authorities that are available to participate in, and those that are flashing have vacancies. So if you click on whatever you're interested in, it'll take you to a brief description and then actually take you to an application, and then it'll direct you how to submit it for those that are interested in volunteering to serve on boards and authorities.
Great, so go to our webpage if you're interested and look to see any area that you may find of interest and you can apply. We want to thank the ones that do serve on the boards and it'd be great for the community, anyone out there, to contact us as we continue to fulfill those obligations.
And you took the words out of my mouth, Mr. McDermott. It was a great effort I have here for your viewing pleasure.
I didn't know.
What's that?
I didn't know Cindy Gant.
Yeah. Director McDermott, Cindy Dawson, Chris Della Piazza and Marcy Davis worked very hard on this. Chris and Marcy are from the IS Department, Cindy and obviously Director McDermott are from the Commissioners' Office. Did a fantastic job of creating an interactive website so that if you're interested in serving likecoming County, you can see, all these are great symbols that show the different authorities. That's what the director was talking about. So we encourage you to go there and you can save the application as a PDF and then print yourself a copy and you can shoot it on to submit it.
Send it on.
Send it on.
You know, we're seeing a lot of different things happening in America today, and I want everybody to reflect, whoever's taking the oath to serve and uphold the Constitution of the United States, read it. We're at a very difficult time in our history and you should take that oath very seriously. As far as honoring the vets, we've had a number of vets pass away this last month and we give $75 to $175 away, likecoming County, to those vets that die. I encourage people to look and, you know, see when they served, where did they serve, and you can get a lot of information from those records. I also want everybody to realize that a number of those names that died, and those 13, were Hispanic, and how critical still it is that America welcomes, you know, foreigners and immigrants to this country. We need them. We need them to fill in our workforce and their beautiful families, and they live and fight just like everyone else for this country. I'll add one more thing. I was made aware of, and I hope that our legislators can do something about it, or someone. When a vet has a serious illness and, you know, they go to the Veterans Hospital and they, or also are in disability, whereas Medicare can, you know, kick in, there's a battle going on right now. And when your loved one has a severe illness, life-threatening, and they send you to the VA hospital and they say, there's nothing wrong, there's nothing else we can do, we don't know what it is, as a family, as a wife, a mother, you want the best care you can have. And these two agencies, Veterans Affairs and Medicaid, are fighting on who's going to take the responsibility or who are going to be able to leave that medical field and try to get some more expertise as far as their providers or their doctors. It's a scary thing to have a life-threatening illness and you can't go get second opinions. And we need to correct this. This is a tragedy. These people suffer from physical and emotional damage, and they did it for us. So we will be reaching out to our legislators and hopefully we can get some action taken as soon as possible.
So a constituent called me and asked me about the state of COVID in the county and the vaccines and so forth. I thought it might be a good idea next week to invite Let's End COVID to come to the meeting and give us a quick update on what they've been doing and how many people have been vaccinated. We continue to see billboards around and so forth, and that's, I think that's a good thing, if nothing else, it keeps people talking about it. So to that constituent, we will get an update and then we can sort of have a further conversation after we hear the state of the situation in likecoming County.
Thank you. Last weekend, as we all know, was 9/11, and if you turn on the news, which is probably not everybody's best interest these days, because it's just full of anger and sadness of the divide that's in this country, and it takes a toll on you if you really watch it on a regular basis and, you know, people start to wonder if there's any hope. As I attended the 9/11 ride, the ceremony, I was inspired to see, as I traveled in my car over there, the flags that were everywhere. And I went through four communities on the way over, and then to get over there and see the love of our country on display and respect and honor they were paying the victims and the survivors. And then to come home and go to another small town in our county and participate in the luminary recognition. recognition, because they had 2,977 luminaries lit to honor each victim. You know, and as I helped light those luminaries, I thought each one of those luminaries represented a life that we lost, the families left behind, the friends they left behind, and the loved ones they left behind. But each one of those bags had a light. It was a light, it was a light that continues to go on. Each one of those victims, their legacies are still going. You know, Frank Silver, if you're not familiar with him, he's one of the founders of Tunnels and Towers for Freedom, and he walked 500-some miles here, 15 miles a day, for I think 25 days in honor of his brother, who was a firefighter, who was on his way home from his third shift that night. Tunnels he had heard, or he had heard the towers had been run into. He turned his car around and tried to get back through Lincoln Tunnel, but it's closed. So he parked his car and put 60 pounds of firefighter gear on his back and ran it through the tunnel, basically ran to the towers, through the tunnel to the towers, and ran into those towers to save lives, knowing he probably wasn't going to come out. And you hear stories like that, and it gives you hope that there's good in man, there's good in humankind. And I saw the unity on 9/11 in our own community. Nobody was talking politics, no one was arguing with each other. They were hugging each other, loving each other, and sharing the respect that we had in 9/12 of 2001. 9/12 started to bring this country together. We've lost it. And then I came home, and I turned on the TV, and I saw Ohio State playing Oregon, and I saw young kids in the stands chanting "USA," our youth, chanting "USA." You know, that's what we need to get back to. We're one country, we're all Americans, united under one God. That's what this country was founded on, and we had to stop being in each other's throats and honor those victims. Because I said in my prayer last week, we're no better than those 19 men with that hatred in our hearts. If we don't start to love each other, it's okay to have differences, it's okay to have disagreements. You know, I just had one the other night on the phone, it was a friend, he was a school board member. We disagreed on an item, but at the end of the conversation, we said, "Good to talk to you, friend." And we respect each other, stay in touch, and if we can help each other, we will. And that's what we need to do. We need to have that spirit of 9/12 to honor everyone that's been lost, including those 13 people that I read their names this morning. Thank you. Public, anything?
Nothing on line.
Okay, this time we will be adjourned, and our next meeting will be September 21st, 2021, right here in this meeting. Thank you, have a good day.
Good short meeting.
Yep.